There's a handheld one right there.
Jodi has a microphone?
Yep.
So maybe it's that one?
She does.
Wonderful. Alright, and I'm gonna leave my phone up here. We'll do it this way. Alright, all yours. Y'all ready?
Hi, I'm Bernessa.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, do I read?
Okay, great. We are ready.
Hi y'all, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, welcome. And if you're not in the special session for the newly diagnosed, you're in the wrong room. So, um, but welcome and looking forward to a great presentation here by these ladies. Uh, my name is Patty Ashmore and I'm one of the mitochondrial ambassadors and do a lot with the society and just wanted to introduce these ladies. But, um, it was one thing to remind you that, um, there's a link if you see, if you see this in your packet, there's a link to, um, for you to fill out, um, on, on these ladies and, um, you'll, you'll be entered into a drawing for, for a free chance to win. Next year's, um, in Phoenix, Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, so, um, be sure to do that. And also please, if you don't mind, just turn off for silence, silence your cellphone. Okay? Thank you. Um, these ladies, uh, the first one is Colleen, um, Mareska and, um, she is a licensed certified genetic counselor and she earned her master's degree in genetic counseling from Arcadia University and worked in genetic cancel, counseling and general medicine specifically in cancer before coming to the, going to the Center for Mitochondrial Translational Medicine at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. She is a senior genetic counselor and program administrator. So welcome, Ms. Colleen Mareska. And Jodi Venta, uh, she is also a licensed certified genetic counselor. She has her masters in genetics center, masters in genetics counseling, sorry. I asked her if MGC stood for, uh, movie gift card because I'd like to go to a movie tonight, but that's not what it stood for. Um, she earned her undergraduate degrees in biology and psychology from the University of Pittsburgh and a masters in genetic counseling from the University of Maryland Medical Center in Baltimore. She worked as a genetic counselor and neurogenics program coordinator at the Children's National Medical Center in Washington DC before taking her current position as manager of the Center for Rare Disease Therapy. All that sounds familiar to you, all rare disease? At the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So welcome, Ms. Venta. Um, we also have Berneska Lewis. She has her masters of science in social work and she is also a licensed master of social worker. Um, Bern, Ms. Lewis received a master's degree in social work from the University of Texas at Arlington. She worked for 22 years in the field with the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services and with the Public Health Department before joining the Pediatric Neurology Mitochondrial Center of Excellence at University of Texas Health Science Center in Houston, Texas as a senior social worker where she provides medical and psychiatric, psychiatric, social case services related to patient care and research. Welcome, Ms. Lewis. Ms. Jean Flickinger, she is a physical therapy and a PC, yes, I'm sorry.
Pediatric clinical specialist.
I apologize. Pediatric clinical specialist. She's board certified clinical specialist in pediatric physical therapy in the neuromuscular program at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia where her expertise is in childhood, childhood neuromuscular disease and infant development. She's also credentialed as a clinical instructor by the American Physical Therapy Association. Welcome. And then Ms. Laura McMullin, she is a certified clinical research coordinator in the mitochondrial medicine frontier, um, program at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. CHOP has a special meaning to me because my brother went there, I'm sorry about that. Um, where she oversees large scale industry sponsored clinical trials for the treatment of mitochondrial disease. She is also responsible for developing a data integration pro, project to improve the program's clinical research infrastructure in order to implement a precision medicine based approach for patients with mitochondrial disease. Welcome. Thank you all.
And we also have Dr. Sumit Perik who is not on the list for whatever reason, so welcome.
You're on the slide. Alright, well, welcome everyone. We actually had thought about this session as a lot of new families that are joining the mito community, we thought that we would do kind of a special breakout session for the newly diagnosed and we're happy to announce as part of the mitochondrial care networks, we are developing a pamphlet with some of this information along with Dr. Perik and Dr. Goldstein and Dr. Carr, so, and Jodi and I, we have worked a little while, we're hoping to launch it before this meeting, but hopefully stay tuned. So, how many people have been diagnosed in the past year in this room? Oh, or loved ones, sorry. How about in the past six months? Anyone diagnosed within a month and here today? Alright, well, welcome. So, we wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, there's a lot of feelings that go into this new diagnosis. Sometimes you're overwhelmed, so it's kind of that tipping of the iceberg. You've already been dealing with a lot and now this diagnosis is adding to that. But some families also might feel like this is an answer and they're kind of at a crossroads. There's a lot of information out there from families, doctors and other roads, so they're trying to navigate now this newly complex system that they're walking into. And others even feel somewhat relieved, like it's kind of that answer, like that lightbulb that clicks everything together. But as a result with a new diagnosis or kind of putting a name to all the symptoms an individual's experiencing, there might be some additional questions that arise. So, we're not going into details about mitochondrial disease at this particular session, but it's very challenging and a lot of patients who have a new diagnosis, they ask the questions to their medical team, like, why was this, why did this take so long? Why did we not know about it? You know, it's very difficult to diagnose, there's a long list of differentials, any symptom at any age, but we are improving that process which you're gonna hear a lot about and the exciting thing is now we have pharma entering that space. One big question families always ask, you know, as they enter this, they hear someone has this individual on their team or that, who should be on your medical team? And that really is symptom driven. So, obviously no two individuals with mitochondrial disease are exactly the same, so it really is gonna depend on what your individual diagnosis is or what your particular symptoms are at that time and that might change over time. You know, with UMDF and the MCN, there are centers that are treating patients with mitochondrial disease, so trying to identify is that a feasibility for you or your family to touch base with one of those centers? And then really establishing, you know, with Dr. Perik and all the individuals, there's so many great specialists, but you still need a really good primary care doctor. You still need to get kind of that routine care that's provided and some places actually have complex care or complex diagnostic pediatricians, which is really nice. The adult world is still, um, kind of working on some of that, but they are also integrating this a little bit more. And those individuals would kind of partner with your general pediatrician that might be close to home, but they can kind of act a little bit more as like a medical hub to kind of keep all the specialists and appointments with you all. And then of course, there's a long list of specialists that individuals have to see and I think the key is sometimes your specialists might kind of be all across or even in two different locations depending on your needs. You might have your neurologist close by and then some of your specialties far away, but kind of keeping that all on the same page, organizing yourselves, I think is important too for your own medical record keeping. And even we were just discussing before this, you know, not all places offer the same thing. So, MCN is trying to develop a little bit more guidelines on what centers of excellence or good care should have, but sometimes you, your local geneticist or your metabolic doctor might not have a social worker present, but you have a GI and a neurologist and they might have that individual. So, the key is, which is always hard, but sometimes to ask if you don't know if that's something available, but they are really, your doctors are there to support you, but they also have a great team that's also there to support you. So, really utilizing all the resources that are present. And I think the other thing that some institutions have are kind of complex care or complex scheduling. It doesn't always work perfect at our institution, but when it is working well or when you have that kind of touch base, you can kind of get those multiple appointments on the same day or at least try to, if you're staying overnight, within that same week. So, ask if your institution locally has that available and that might also help you all. And then of course, health insurance, which we'll get to some of this Q and A, but understanding your particular insurance plan is key. So, Bernessa is a social worker joining our panel and it really is complex, you know, every, all specialists kind of see patients across the US and every, even the commons, the Blue Cross, Blue Shields, they have different variations all across what is available. So, really getting down to what is allowed in your plan and actually there might be some other things like case managers. So, that's a point person that you could contact within your insurance plan if you're having difficulty receiving coverage for equipment, medications, visits, all of those. And then of course, Medicaid and Medicare. You know, these are things that you might be eligible for and not even know. Also disability and social security, these are huge things. These could help supplement some of the cost that takes precedent of taking care of yourself or your loved one with a new diagnosis. So, understanding that eligibility, I think is really important because I think a lot of people think it's all income based, but there are so many resources out there that could be available to you all. Other resources here, the UMDF also has a lot of opportunities. One that got cut off are some of the legal services, so like guardianship, power of attorney, what to do as your loved one gets older and may not be able to make those medical decisions. You know, that's important for you to have in place and not wait till, you know, they're 17 and a half and that might take some time filing that paperwork. And financial assistance, it's important to know that's not always income based and I think it's very challenging sometimes for individuals to communicate that they might need some additional help. And that doesn't mean that you're not okay or that you're not able to, if some patients, family members aren't even able to work, but we learn a lot from what you all share with us. So, you sometimes find resources your team didn't even know about. So, I think always communicating and sharing with other families is very important, but you know, these can help from medical expenses, but also from your basic expenses. So, sometimes there are organizations that will pay a bill. So, if your child or your individ, loved one is admitted for prolonged periods of times and you had to miss time and pay out of work, they might be able to help with maybe that insurance payment that month or that mortgage payment. So, there are other resources, non-medical, that help to mitigate some of that costs. There's of course travel grants, so, you know, getting to some of these institutions, I think we were looking at, they're very much in the coastal regions, so it's challenging for some families that might not have the opportunity or the means financially, but there are also even some flights that can fly individuals who have medical needs, like angel flights and things like that, that can even fly medically fragile individuals. And then medical supplies, there are a lot of opportunities for, and different insurance companies are actually making some headway in helping individuals with disabilities obtain some of this coverage a little bit more readily. And then I think the last topic we just want to talk about was kind of, who here has shared their story with their families about their diagnosis yet? Okay. Anyone share it with their friends? Excellent. Anyone who has not shared it, what were some of the reasons behind not sharing, if you feel comfortable saying it? Some people, it's too complex, they don't want to talk about it, um, or maybe, you know, they just feel like they might not understand. So, there is a session even for families, I know, helping to share that story and I think it's important, especially for individuals who are caring for your child, but also for you all to get some additional support. But you know, some questions that come to us about sharing information, we also can help in that process, your care team with especially talking about other family members and who might be at risk. Mitochondrial disease is not simple for, and it's also not simple in the inheritance. It really can be any inheritance pattern and getting that information sometimes out to the family can be tricky, but you know, like I said, our, the healthcare providers would be able to help in that process. And then importantly, also clinical trials and research. So, most individuals, when they're newly diagnosed, there's a lot of information for you all to obtain and you might be approached about research, whether it's basic research or clinical trials, so any drug information and it's always voluntary, you, you know, with research opportunities, but we do need research and we do need individuals to participate in order to push the field forward. We were just talking about the bystander effect. You know, you don't want to not participate because you assume everyone else is gonna participate. If they're still recruiting for the study, they don't have enough individuals yet to fulfill that participation, so it's important to partner and sometimes it's just a matter of timing. It might not be the right time for you or your loved one to participate in that trial, but we'll open a little bit more to the Q and A to talk about that more. And I think lastly, the most important thing is you're not alone. You know, look around you, this is a disease community that has been formed for patients and families and loved ones. So, I think that's huge as well as your healthcare team, but you also have all of you to partner with. So, your stories might not be the same, you might not have the exact same struggles that each individual, but you do have a lot of shared resources that can help one another through this, um, process. Now, we wanted to open to a question and answer session. Anyone have questions out there?
I can come to you.
If you want to raise your hand. Excellent.
Perfect. Thank you.
If you feel comfortable, maybe say your name.
Sure. My name is Alicia Grady and I just found out about a year ago that my five-year-old has traits of mitochondrial. His doctor is here, Andrea Grootman. So, um, it's new to me, I have a 23-year-old that does not have any symptoms, but my question is, you spoke about finances, um, being a federal employee, a lot of it was shut down, such as social security and Medicare and Medicaid and all of that. Do you have a list of companies or groups that can assist or guide you the correct way? As far as with the, um, financial portion of it?
Wait, there is a list on UMDF as well as mito action on some shared resources, but I don't know if Bernessa has some other tips or tricks.
And if you want to, um, before you leave, you can give me your information and I can email you, um, a link that we provide, a link with different resources, the grants that also assist with paying, assisting with medical equipment or, you know, like you said, financial assistance and things of that nature, but there's a lot of resources out there to me from your name.
And I would use the opportunity of this conference to ask other family members that question, as Colleen said, sometimes we learn like the best tips and tricks from you all. So, um, you know, network, ask other people if they've, you know, had any successes too.
Other questions? We had one online. Oh, excellent.
Hi, I was attracted to this workshop by the question in your handout, what to do if you do not have a genetic diagnosis?
You wanna take it, or you wanna, you wanna start? Well, it, it depends on, you know, what has happened already, so a lot of times you might need to have access first to genetic testing. I don't know kind of your personal story, but essentially without a genetic diagnosis, it really is symptom management, you know, but there is updates to genetics all the time. You know, we always recommend if you don't have a genetic cause, checking in with someone every one to two years, allowing time for some genetic discovery, but there are new genes being described monthly. Um, so I think that's always a good time just to say you don't have it in 2019, but you might obtain that diagnosis further down the road. I don't know if you want to add anything? One more question.
So, can you have a diagnosis based on symptoms or I think it's suspected mitochondrial myopathy is what determined your facility, I read?
Yeah.
So, there, there is some debate in the field about what label should get used for people who don't have a genetic diagnosis. And, and the rationale for that or the reason for that debate is because as genetics has gotten smarter and the testing has gotten better, there's so many people that were suspected as having mitochondrial dysfunction or disease have been found to have other things. And it's often thrown their world, the patient, the family's world, kind of topsy-turvy because when they were told that they had a mitochondrial disease, they took it to heart, they ran with it, they learned as much as they could about it, they joined a community and then whether it's three years or five years or 10 or 20 years later, now somebody's telling them, no, sorry, that's not what this is. It's, it's something completely different. And, and it maybe is affecting how your mitochondria work a little bit, but it's, it's not all the stuff that you read about with mitochondrial disease. And, um, partly to avoid that situation for our families, partly to keep, and then the other thing is when doctors hear a diagnosis, especially if they're not very knowledgeable about it, they often run with it as well. So, they don't stop to say, wait, is this an accurate diagnosis? Is this the right thing? Is what's going on in my patient definitely caused by this or do I need to look for other causes? And the reason that this concern of saying suspected mitochondrial disease is being looked at again and more closely is because we don't want doctors to put blinders on and shut down and not be thoughtful, uh, because it's very easy to chalk up almost any symptom to mitochondrial disease. And we have patients who even when they have confirmed mitochondrial disease, things getting overlooked because people keep chalking it up to mitochondrial disease, but definitely when they don't have mitochondrial disease. And sometimes these things are treated differently or managed differently, um, or more amenable to treatment. There are certain medication precautions that get sometimes taken when you have a genetically confirmed mitochondrial disease that you may not necessarily need to have. Extra medical care that you don't need to receive, lab work and testing that you don't need to receive. And it's working with your team, whoever is managing you to make sure that it's clear as to where that level of suspicion is for mitochondrial disease, um, so that again, people just keep an open mind. We have so many families that were diagnosed and then they walked away from the diagnostic table thinking, okay, my diagnostic journey is done. I need to learn how to live with this and manage this. So, they start going to providers, but then they never revisit that other stop along the way to say, wait, was this correct? Because sometimes they heard initially suspected, but then over time, that suspected kind of fell on the backs, you know, on the back burner and then everybody's more focused on the mitochondrial part. And, and it's due to no fault of anybody's, it's just how, you know, busy everybody is, how complex all of this is. Most doctors outside of here don't necessarily even understand all of this and so, so they're all trying to do the best possible, but we're trying very hard to make sure that gets avoided. So, it's not that you can't have a mitochondrial disease diagnosed without DNA, it's just that that's becoming the new kind of high bar. I wouldn't even call it the gold standard, it's the new high bar, but our genetic technology is at a place where we can only make that diagnosis if I'm generous, half the time. Which means for half of our patients, they've got something. They may have issues that really point a big arrow in the direction of a mitochondrial problem and we've got to manage them and take care of them, but we ask these families now, or at least we've been trying to ask the people, the clinicians to talk to these families and say, look, this might be mitochondrial, but we don't know. Let's manage the mite, issues that might be mitochondrial the way we would for a mitochondrial patient, but let's also keep an open mind and walk the path of somebody who doesn't have a firm diagnosis. Again, so people, keep an open mind, do the right testing, keep looking every one to two years, because genetic testing is, technology has moved immensely rapidly. I mean, there was basically a 50-year of just a snail's pace and then in 10 years we've, we've, things have gotten big. And, and, and I think in about three to five years, we're basically gonna have one test.
Yes.
We're gonna have one test and it's gonna be testing for dummies and so it doesn't matter if your doctor's smart enough or not, they will check the box, they send the test.
And then we just have to interpret it.
And then we have to interpret it. Right. But it really, hopefully we'll get there because, you know, now the struggle we have is that we have a list of 10 tests and somebody has to be thoughtful about knowing and making sure all 10 are considered in your case and sent and, and that doesn't always happen.
So, I've been struggling with various symptoms for my whole life, I just didn't know it. And finally, about a year and a half ago now, uh, I went to a neurologist and I said, I feel like my body is attacking me from the inside out and I don't know what to do about it. And that neurologist didn't know what to do with me either. So, I went to another neurologist who looked at some of my symptoms and said, I think you need to see a muscular, uh, neurologist, someone who's specials in, in neurology, neural, in the neurological effects of muscle issues. And so, um, we went to a neurologist who we thought was that type of doctor and he ordered a genetic test. Well, he did some other in-office testing and then he ordered a genetic test, which came back negative for what we later found out was the one thing he asked for it to be tested for. And so, it was a little disappointing that we sent that out and came back negative for what he thought it might be. But, uh, then he ordered a muscle biopsy and the muscle biopsy showed ragged red fibers and some other things going on and that led him to believe that I had mito. So, he said to me, make sure you eat enough, no fasting and conserve your energy. And that was all he said to me. And I was left with my mouth hanging open because I was like, okay, well, now what? So, then we decided to do a little bit more research and fortunately my partner, my fiance is, is, has a background in chemistry and some other areas. So, he knew enough to go online and look at the, um, the state board of neurologists and we found that this doctor who ordered the muscle biopsy was not a specialist in my area. So, he continued to do further research and finally found someone at John Hopkins who does specialize. And so, I just had one appointment with him a few weeks ago, but he has ordered like a kazillion blood tests and he has also ordered genetic testing again for me. And, uh, and so that's where I am right now. But I kind of want to know, and I'm sorry it took me all this to get to my question, but I kind of want to know, what is the difference in what you find in a muscle biopsy versus genetic testing?
Do you want me to take it? So, you can look at a muscle biopsy in a few different ways. You can look at how the mitochondria actually look in the muscle, which is one of the things that they did when they saw the ragged red fibers. You can look at the electron transport chain, which is like the energy factory that mitochondria use to make ATP. Complex 4 deficiency? Sure. And so, what that tells us, and Dr. Perik can comment on this too, but what that tells us is that the mitochondria, that there's a problem with the mitochondria. The tricky part is you don't necessarily know whether that's primary, so that's the primary cause for your symptoms, or it's secondary, which is why genetic testing is really important. One of the things that we've learned over the past, um, 10, 15 years is just that there are other conditions that if you look at the muscle and if you look at some mitochondria function, there are conditions that are not mitochondrial disease that can show mitochondrial dysfunction. So, we sometimes call that secondary mitochondrial dysfunction. And so, the genetic testing can be really helpful because it can help pinpoint the reason why the mitochondria are, you know, either there's a deficiency in complex 4 or the ragged red fibers. So, we've really, and there was a time and, um, I'm not that old, but there was a time where we did talk about muscle biopsy being the, the gold standard and things have really changed with genetics. And so, now we're really using genetic testing as the, the high bar, the gold standard to help find a diagnosis. Um, and I think one of the things that you brought up is really important and it can be really challenging, but asking questions. Um, I've had a lot of patients, so I'm a genetic counselor and I've had a lot of patients that have come and seen us and said, well, I already had genetic testing. And so, um, you know, the first thing that we would say is, well, let's see a copy of what's been done, because maybe it's been one gene, you know, and there's 20,000 more. Um, and there's many different genes that can cause mitochondrial disease. So, it's important that, um, you sort of dig into what genetic testing has been done. I've definitely had patients that have had genetic testing done that was state of the art five years ago and didn't find any answers and when they've returned to see us and we send new testing, we do find answers. So, um, so I think it's important- So I think it's important to ask the specific questions about what genetic testing has been done, what does this rule out, or what does this make less likely, and are there other options out there? And I think it's hard, I think it's hard to self-advocate and try to find the right specialists, but it's...this is a really important group to lean on, to help find those folks, and the Mitochondrial Care Network provides a good way to find experts either in your area or maybe a little closer to home that can help answer a lot of those questions.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll build on that a little bit. So, and I use this story a lot, so I apologize if any of you have heard it already, but it's just very illustrative. We had a woman come when she was in her 50s, and she had imbalance, her nerves were not working well, she had what we call myoclonus, her eyesight was deteriorating. She checked a lot of the boxes for what we called red flags of mitochondrial disease, genetic mitochondrial disease. She had already come to us with a muscle biopsy showing ragged red fibers, she had hyalactic acid levels, right? So you hear this story, if you're a medical student and you've learned about mitochondrial disease, these are the things you memorize, and you say, "That's what this is going to be." If we had a room full of folks who are experienced in mitochondrial disease, most would raise their hand and say, "That's what this was." And one of my teachers, Bruce Cohen, had kind of taught me, "Well, you know, you don't just put blinders on and you think of everything that can cause those things, and you send a bunch of tests." And one of the things he taught me to send was, for every patient, is a, what's called a heavy metal screen and a toxicology panel. And her heavy metal screen came back sky-high for arsenic levels. And so that's the short of it. The long of it is, and we found this out about 18 months later, is that her husband had been poisoning her. And, right? And so yes, she had a mitochondrial problem, but it wasn't genetic, it was because of arsenic poisoning. And, you know, the punchline is, you know, she didn't need all the vitamins and cocktails and supplements, she needed, you know...
A divorce.
That's right, a detective and a divorce, right? Yeah. So, and more importantly, the muscle biopsy, it's a tool, but it's a faulty tool, so it does help us, but it's a tool that fluctuates over time depending on what's going on. And so there have been people, some, I don't know, Dr. Maraba just talked to all of you prior to this and gave the Mitom101 talk, she's done some of this work, the muscle biopsy fluctuates depending on your state. So Mark Tarnapolsky's done some very nice work to show that if you get your arm casted or your leg casted, and then, you know, you don't use it for a while, and then you get the cast taken off, and if you look at how the mitochondria work in that situation, it shows a problem. It shows a complex one problem or a complex four problem, under the microscope, the mitochondria don't look healthy. You put that person through therapy again, and then re-biopsy them, and they did this in Canada, their mitochondria start working properly again and test normal. So your muscle biopsy was abnormal, and now it's normal, six months later. You take people who are malnourished, they have something called failure to thrive, muscle biopsy shows a big problem, you re-nourish them, replenish them, and do a repeat muscle biopsy, and now all of a sudden, the mitochondrial problems have either vanished or have gotten a lot softer. So we take all this into account when we see muscle biopsy results, but it's also when we see, even if it's a horribly abnormal muscle biopsy, we try very hard to explain this to all of you and say, "Don't, don't just..." I know you want an answer. Your journey that you've taken so far, how frustrating, how long it must have been, how confusing, and this whole time you're still feeling crummy and nobody's necessarily helping you. Sometimes you're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, even though it's not necessarily a light you want to have with mitochondrial disease, but you're seeing it, now you might come to a specialty center, and then somebody's trying to pull that rug away, you know, kind of out from underneath you, and that's not our intention at all. It really is to make sure that we're not putting you in the wrong box and then taking care of you the wrong way, and making sure we don't miss things that are treatable. And so then the other piece is that what we've learned with smarter genetic testing is there are hundreds, hundreds of genetic diseases that seem to mimic mitochondrial disease. And we did not know that, because we weren't smart enough and we didn't have the right tests, and we now know that. And Dr. Rahman, who's floating around somewhere, did a very nice talk yesterday or day before, all the days are, you know, getting mixed together, but who...and she basically showed case after case where many people in the room would have believed it was mitochondrial disease, and it turned out to not be at all. And so I think with all this knowledge, that's why we're coming back to our families and patients and saying, "Let's take a closer look, or let's not settle on this until we can be a bit more definitive."
Other questions?
Okay.
This one is for the physical therapist. As I stated, I do have a five-year-old, and we're going through IEPs in school, he has a PT at school, physical therapist at school, and we also have an outside physical therapist that he sees, because again, in his IEP, he has physical therapy once, once a week. So with that being said, they don't understand it. So they just don't get it. Neither one of them, and I've tried multiple PTs to let them know, "As his mom, I'm his advocate." So, "Look this up, look that up, this is his disorder, he's been diagnosed with this." So as a therapist, is there anyone that specializes in specific mitochondrial assistance or just in understanding? How, what's the best way and best practices that I need to tell them to help my baby?
That's a great question. Thank you. Yeah, that's a tough one, because I just joined our mitochondrial team about a year and a half ago, and I have a neuromuscular background, so I feel like there's not, there's not a lot of physical therapists out there that specialize in mitochondrial disease. That being said, I think that that will change. But I think having a neuromuscular specialist might be the closest, you know, thing used to dealing with similar, similar issues. That might be a start anyway. And then just working, working to find someone that really will work with you. You know, they should be looking, looking it up, reading articles, trying to figure out the best way to help your child. You've given them everything, you've done that for them. Yeah, yeah, it's tough.
For me, if I find that, if you're not willing to assist, because each person, each child, each individual, you know, there's no do it this one way. You have to sometimes step out of the box and create something different for every person. So we're going through a few, I mean, I give them eight to 10 months, you know, to, "Let's see, let's work." But if it doesn't work, no, let's go to another one. This is what I'm paying for. I want my son to have the best and to get as much assistance as he can. So what you're telling me is to go for a neuromuscular specialist, that's what I'm going to do.
Yeah, try that, see if it helps. But, but again, they don't have to be a neuromuscular specialist, they just have to be someone that's willing to work with you, look at your child's individual needs, because that's, you know, because everyone with mito disease is very different. There's, there's unique concerns and issues with each, each person, so. And some of that makes it fun, too, for the kids. Your child should feel like they're coming in and playing and having a great time and not overdoing it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sometimes like pediatric rehab, like that are experienced in cardiac with like more endurance as opposed to like, "You need to walk, you need to do this," where they have a little bit more flexibility in their thinking, that sometimes helps as well.
And I manage our Center for Rare Disease Therapy, so I see children with all kinds of rare diseases, and families often ask this question, "Is there somebody that specializes in X?" And I think the answer is exactly like Jean said, you want somebody that will work with you. Because even if somebody knew mitochondrial disease really well, your son might be different than anybody else that they've ever seen, right? And understanding his strengths and challenges is probably the most important part, so.
Hi, my son was diagnosed with KSS a year ago, and I remember the day of diagnosis was overwhelming, and, you know, MDA came in, a social worker came in, and just doctor after doctor, and anyway, a social worker came in and said, "Hi, I'm here for you." And I had no idea what they were, what they were able to do or assist me with, and I was so overwhelmed, I couldn't answer that question. So now I feel like I'm at the point where I piece together the other components, but now my question is, what can a social worker do for us that we're missing out on?
I was reading, I'm trying to find answers for you, so. Can you repeat the question?
It was, what can social workers do to help with a new diagnosis?
So I think that the key thing is just connecting you with resources for a new diagnosis. I know with our patients, we normally provide them like a patient packet with information about the UMDF and their connections and support network, and then also give information to about mito action. And then the key is connecting you with, collaborating with other specialists within your medical care system, and we do a lot of that collaborations with the other social workers there or your specialists, and communicating with their offices and stuff like that to just to ensure economy of care. And then I also provide like resources, information with the community, travel information or assistance information, like with medical equipment, things of that nature, and that's all I was just looking at.
If we had questions like on, as the symptoms advance, for example, my son has difficulty in the heat, I'm moving him around, and if I needed a chair with dignity, you know, would I contact the social worker to help me with the financial end of it?
I, I'm sorry, I actually have a place on your local, New York. New York, there's a company that I, that I, I'm proud of my son for, sorry. I'm so excited about this place.
That's here, in the Rockville, Bethesda area, and they're called the Lollipop Kids Foundation, and Debbie Salin, S-A-L-I-N, is amazing. The Lollipop Kids Foundation. And she's here in the Maryland area, Rockville, Bethesda area. Her name is Debbie, D-E-B-B-I-E, S-A-L-I-N, and it's a huge community. My son has a chair, an accessible chair, it's normally $3,500. Gave it to us for free. They, there's a lot of resources from this particular group that I've found to help myself with monetary items, and she has a network in its own, and then there's a lot of people also that travel out of state to come here to see her. So I would, if that's one person that I know of that may be able to help you out or link you to someone in your area, because she's been doing this, her son is 23, so she's been doing it for a while all by herself. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to...
So, and that's what I was...
To give that out.
I'm going to email you afterwards, and I had the information in my email to like links to grants and resources, this is variations out there, just to name a few, there's Children's Charity Fund, Bright Steps Forward, Marty Lyons Foundation, Firsthand Foundations, so there's different organizations out there that can provide assistance. And then also too, with our patients, we often work with the dual medical equipment companies, going through your insurance first to see what they'll cover, and then what they may not cover, we kind of reach out and give you information about the grants and resources out there.
Also, just to add to that too, a lot of social workers do an intake, so if you just say like, "I wanted to touch base with you," they're very good at pulling out and assessing what you might not even know you need. They're very skilled at that, so I think even just making a phone call, like, "I just wanted to touch base, we're in a good spot right now, see if I can optimize anything." They have a lot of skill sets in that as well.
Also, as far as medical equipment, MDA has a loaning closet, so if you call your local MDA office, they'll... You just found it, okay. It's really great, they'll, it's iffy if you'll find what you're, you know, you're looking for, but it's nice if they have something you need, even if your insurance does cover it. That whole process can sometimes take three to six months to order the medical equipment you need, so it's another nice option.
We live in a world of short attention spans and soundbites, and mitochondrial disease and specifically my daughter's situation of Lee's syndrome doesn't translate easily when you are talking to friends, family members, coworkers, even in some cases, news reporters. Can you guys offer a suggestion for what to tell people in a short, but an understandable layperson term that you can tell people about this sort of thing to describe what, you know, mitochondrial disease is and what Lee's syndrome is?
Actually, the UMDF has a handbook that we provide to our patients, which is very broken down, layman's terms, what it is, how it affects the body, you know, what forms of treatments are utilized, key things looked for, and how to work with the community and the school systems as well. In addition to that, too, it's just, if you have a social worker within the medical, you know, with your doctor, officer, whatever, having, they may be communicate to with the school systems overall, the effects and what to look for, that may be another way to provide
This is one of the things I often ask patients or we talk about after a new diagnosis, and I've learned some tips from other families, but I think explaining that mitochondrial disease is an issue with your body's ability to make energy, and it really impacts a lot of the body systems that require a lot of energy, like the brain. And then you can kind of list whatever body systems are most impacted for your child has been like the shortest way. Again, I get these questions a lot for a lot of different rare conditions, and I think having that sentence to explain, it's not like a condition that you can say Lee's syndrome, and everybody that sits around you say, "Oh, I'm familiar with that." And so you have to follow it up with another sentence explaining what it is. And so perhaps saying, whatever way works for you, but, you know, mitochondrial disease impacts the ability of the body to make energy, and it really impacts some of the organs that require a lot of energy, like the brain and the muscles. That's my, I don't know if anybody else has any other hints, but... It's prob, they're, do they have them out front?
They should have.
Yeah, they probably have them out front. It's like, is it mito, is it called Mitom101 still?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, ask at the UMDF desk, they have PDFs online, too, but...
I just wanted to say for the adults in the room and who may be from the Maryland area or this area, I did my physical therapy at Shady Grove Adventist, and it was a two-fold experience. On one half, my physical therapist that was working with my overall body didn't understand it and didn't take the time to do any research. He just said, "I don't know what to do for you." But I stayed and worked with the occupational therapists there, and they were amazing. And the takeaway for me from those sessions was, "Do what you can, and when you feel like you can't do anymore, just stop." And it's okay, because, you know, I was feeling guilty a lot, because I didn't think, I thought I should be able to do more. I thought people would judge me if I couldn't do, you know, beyond, or keep up with everyone else. And they really helped me with the psychology, the psychological feelings I was having, emotional, maybe emotional is better, about, about what I could and could not do. And also in, you know, with my fiance, just saying, "Look, I know you want to go for a walk, but I can't walk as fast, or I can't walk as far." And learning to say that, tell myself, "It's okay, it's okay if I can't." That's the one takeaway I got from, from physical therapy or occupational therapy was, "It's okay to know what your limits are, learn what your body can do, and don't feel bad if you, if you can't do more."
And we have time for just one more question that I think I saw in the corner, is that okay, panel? Are you okay with that?
Hello, so I've had mito for a little longer, and I'm just trying to figure out, like kind of long-term, like how not to make it get worse and stay with my energy budget. I was kind of wondering, along the terms of exercise... I was kind of wondering along the terms of exercise, like pretty much my walking around the house and cooking is my exercise. I can only get through half my hair before I go limp and everything. So I, I use my, all my energy basically just getting through the day, but I also feel like I should be like exercising or doing some kind of, you know, something to prevent it from getting worse. So I just, and PT also is kind of the same thing. Like they just push you and don't really understand, and I would be dead by the time I came home. So like, none of the exercises are really, I don't, I don't know, is it worth it? So if you have suggestions, that would be great.
I hear this a lot. It's a tough one. Yeah, so I guess part of it would be, do you have all the, well, knowing your limitations, conserving your energy so that you make it through the day. And sometimes that may be using, now I don't know your, your, just as an example, a power scooter. Maybe you need to use a power scooter throughout your day during the school so that you have some energy left over for the things that you want to do and the things that you enjoy doing. So a little bit of, but part of it's that. Really working with a therapist that's gonna not give you a bunch of exercises, but really hone in on what's gonna make a functional improvement in your life and to see what works for you, and that's very individual, so. But it's, it's a challenge, I hear, I do hear it a lot. But really just kind of finding that best balance can be very tricky. So again, I think finding a good therapist that's willing to work with you on finding that balance. And may, maybe it's just a little bit of stretching or yoga, or maybe there's a certain functional task that you can't do and you just have to exercise one particular muscle that's gonna help that functional task. Really like fine tuning a program specific to you. Does that help? Did I answer all your questions?
Maybe just one other small one.
Oh, yes, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I heard like you should try to protect your heart. Like is there, is there like specific muscles that are maybe like extra important beyond my individual, like, I don't know.
Uh, can you say it again? I, I couldn't hear the...
Are there maybe like specific muscles that are maybe important for like everyone? Like I heard something about like protecting your heart to make sure the mito doesn't get to your heart, so like to try to get your heart rate up. Are there things that maybe are important to everyone? Or is it very much just specific to...
Uh, it's very, it's very specific, yeah. There are some other nice ways of exercising that are, aren't going to be as strenuous, like aquatic therapy is one, bike riding, some submaximal exercises that, that can be helpful. But aquatic therapy is generally a pretty safe exercise. You get a little bit of strengthening and endurance all in one. And then I had one other thought. I'm blanking right now. Did you want to add to that?
Oh, yeah, ther- therapeutic or horseback riding, absolutely. So, no, so while exercise does have to be individualized, you're hinting at, is there something that might make the mitochondrial disease worse and affect a part of your body? So other than overdoing it, exercise, as far as it's been researched so far, has not made anybody's mitochondrial disease worse. So, so you know, I mean, unless you've had some surgery and have restrictions that have been specifically dictated to you, other than managing your energy levels and fatigability and not overdoing it, there is not one type of exercise, regardless of age, that has made an organ work worse or a mitochondrial disease march or move forward. And what we often hear is just, people overdid it, and then they feel exhausted and it takes days or weeks to recover. And, and that's what we want to avoid, but it is more impacting kind of your quality of life. Fortunately, not your organs and, and the disease itself. I wanted to make one comment, since I think we're winding down, is, you know, there's a lot of this, and some of this has already been mentioned, just the process and the ordeal that families go through to get to a diagnosis, the stress of the diagnosis, the stress and impact of what to do next and all of what you have to take on your shoulders. It's a lot. And it, especially if you're caregivers, but even if you're a patient, and it all weighs on, on not just you, it weighs on your family, and it impacts you and your family. And one of the things that we see least utilized among all the resources we as teams have at our fingertips are counseling and therapy services. And I know it's not necessarily the right answer for everybody, but just, I usually make a pitch about being open to it and considering it. And you might say, "I have no time at all even to take a breath. When am I gonna go to therapy?" But in the long run, it ends up being like one of those things that often there is a payoff, so. Because this is not just hard on you, it's hard on your family, your relationships, and your wellbeing, so.
Okay. Thank you to our panel, and thank you so much for attending. Lunch is being served in the Plaza Ballrooms where we started our day today. Remember that the UMDF store is available for you to purchase some of your UMDF swag throughout the next couple of days. And our afternoon sessions begin at 2:00 after lunch. Family sessions are here in the terrace and beach, which is kind of just a U around to the left. So thank you again, everyone. If you have any scholarship signatures that are needed, I can take care of that for you. Thank you.